Thank you. Good evening, one and all. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board's meeting, Monday, June 25th, 2018. We're gathered here at the Bennington Firehouse. I'm Tom Jacobsen, Chair of the Bennington Select Board. I'd like to have my colleagues introduce themselves. I'll start with Nancy Lively, our esteemed reporter and secretary. Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Carson Thurber.
Thank you for coming, Jean Connor.
And I'm Stuart, our Town Manager.
Thanks, one and all, for attending, either in person or by CAT TV. We're really fortunate to have outstanding coverage of events in this community from CAT TV and other parts of the media world. We had an earlier executive session, which we came out of at 5:55, Stu. And we would start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and Jim, would you lead it?
Sure.
Thanks, Jim. Well done.
And Tom, perhaps I should announce that the agreement resolution is not for the Applegate biomass but for the Monument View.
Oh, it's not ready for?
Yeah, it was an error. Grabbed a previous memo, left the heading.
Yeah.
But it deals with Monument View.
It didn't make sense, yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering, you know, because I thought, anyway.
Does that need an agenda change or anything?
It's gonna be-
We had an agenda set up.
Yeah, we sent it out, we also posted it.
Good. We have a consent agenda containing minutes of June 2nd, 2018, June 4th, 2018, and June 11th, 2018, along with the warrants that are here for signature. There are some of us that might have not have attended the particular meeting, so why don't we move on the minutes and the warrants, and you can just indicate those meetings that you were not meeting or meetings that you weren't at, so the minutes can reflect that. So, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
And those minutes that you are not, which would you like to think your way for? Go ahead.
I missed the June 4th meeting and the June 11th meeting, so I'm abstaining from approving those minutes.
Great.
I think I missed the 4th, so I'll abstain from that.
Jim is abstaining from the June 4th meeting.
And Jeanne is abstaining from the June 2nd meeting.
I think that is all. We did have a forum for conducting the minutes and meetings, so the abstentions will be duly noted in the minutes of this meeting. Do we have any citizen comments? We do have a sign-up sheet. Stu, did you indicate where-
Do you want to take a vote on the agenda? I mean, on the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I didn't vote. I thought you did, okay.
So, motion to approve, or whatever?
Did I say all in favor?
Yeah. Or did you?
Yeah. Okay, that's good. It's better to do it twice, or not at all.
No.
Well, that's true, you did it before discussion. Yeah, I got it right.
So, moving along, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that would like to enter a little visitation or conversation, signify by showing up at our table there? We don't have anyone that's signed up in advance, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move right into the business at hand. The initial item on the business agenda is the John McCullough Library presentation. I think, Jeanne, you're gonna be coming up and visiting with us again. And Mary, good to see you.
Became color-coordinated for us tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We just have some informational packets and a sign-up for our monthly e-newsletter.
Okay, sure.
So, those are coming around.
Okay.
The e-newsletter is the best way to find out what's going on on a monthly basis at the library.
Thanks, Jenny, you can just maybe just introduce yourself and Mary, and we'll go from there.
Hi, my name is Jenny Rosicky, and I'm the Director at the John G. McCullough Free Library in North Bennington. Joining me is-
Mary Rogers. And I am the Volunteer Treasurer.
And the lady with the kids here is our Children's Librarian, Nicole Hall.
Appropriately.
Children!
Thank you. You're bringing your constituents with you. Yes, good, right.
All right, so you'll see in your packet, there you have, let's see, some of the stuff that's been going on recently, like an update on our operating budget, grants and gifts since January, and the John G. McCullough Free Library at a glance. It's kind of a fact sheet about what happened last year, just to kind of take a look. In these packets, there's also a little mini-flyer for an upcoming digital news literacy program that we're hosting at the Left Bank. And the poster at the bottom is our summer reading program lineup. I guess I'll start off with a little bit of fun stuff.
Yeah, and maybe give us, we visited at budget time, right?
Yes.
And at that particular point in time, the library was facing some significant financial challenges, but you were already in the process of working on responding to those challenges.
Yes.
And hopefully tonight you can bring us up-to-date on your successes, or your challenges, or your needs, so the Board can at least be aware of how far you've come in a relatively short period of time.
Certainly, okay, so if you look at the- The operating budget update.
Mm-hmm.
If you look there, I'm very pleased to report that the town of Shasberry approved a 100% increase in funding in March, from $10,000 to $20,000, with the same margin of approval, 65-35. It's the same margin we had when we asked for $10,000. The Village of North Bennington unanimously approved an increase, a 56% increase in funding for the library last year.
That's great.
In April. Our annual fund campaign was our best ever, and that goes from June to June, you know, June 30th to July 1st. Let's see, we hosted a fundraiser dinner at Pangaea in April? Yeah, in April. Raised a little over $5,000, so that helped. And our Friends of the Library group, they offered, opted, generously opted, to fund all of our book, DVD, audiobook, and subscription purchases this year, just to help patch a hole in the budget this year.
Wow, that's great.
It was incredible.
Jeez.
But I'd also like to point out that our Friends group has increased their fundraising total 186% in the past year or so. So, they're busy, and they're passionate about what they do. Our first-ever donor thank-you event was held in March, and we invited everybody who donated to our annual fund to stop by the library for some snacks, but most importantly, some appreciation, and to bring them up to speed on our plans for... It was mostly a donor building, awareness building. You know, here is our five-year plan, which you will see on the back of one of those sheets. It was kind of an unveiling of that. And the plans for the five-year plan are based on a survey that we put out, and also from an informal meeting, gathering ideas and opinions about how could the library improve your life, basically. Let's see, so both the Children's Librarian and I both declined raises this year to help make the budget work, and also our janitorial work is now being done on a volunteer basis. These are small measures, but it all adds up. But I'm also, we've been very busy in the grant, the grant-writing bit. We, biggest news there was, we received a grant for $3,800 from the Department of Libraries Disaster Relief Fund to put in a sump pump and a dehumidifier in our basement, which is in response to the basement flood we had last July. So hopefully, we'll never need to pump out the basement and bail out all the books, and you know, we don't need to do that again, I hope. I'm very pleased to report that the Children's Literacy Foundation selected us as a recipient for the Rural Libraries Grant, which will give us $2,000 in addition to our regular book purchasing budget, to purchase children's nonfiction, something that is a must-do, but unfortunately, nonfiction is expensive, even children's nonfiction, and it often falls to the wayside, so we're bolstering the collection that way. We have a sponsor for our Meeting and Quiet Study Room project. Someone's doing that in memorial for somebody else, and it's coming along nicely, so it's a better use of what is essentially, right now, inert space, a storage closet, being turned into a meeting room.
That's great.
Let's see, we applied for a summer reading performer grant to bring in a professional musician to give a free family concert as part of our summer reading program. That's August 3rd at Lake Perrin. So, it really helped bring along our summer reading club lineup. And, oh yeah, the, we are, we're putting in an outside book drop. The Fund for North Bennington graciously opted to fund part of this project. The Friends of the Library are doing the other part, and it should be out there in a month or so. Every book drop is custom-made, so we're waiting for it to show up.
That's impressive.
Let's see, I went to the library conference, the Vermont Library Association Conference this year on scholarship. The Friends of Robert Frost, after the Frost House was donated, or I think Bennington College purchased that, but the Friends of Robert Frost were dispersing funds, and they have funded five years' worth of seasonal Vermont Humanities Council Speakers Bureau talks, which are high-quality community programs. The Sorting the News from the Chaff Program is one of those, so it's an example of that. Can look forward to 20 of those in the next five years.
Wow.
The staff at the Market Wagon very generously donated their tips for the month of February to the library. And we're also, if you go to Hannaford, you can get a community bag, and we get a dollar for each one sold, so.
That's great.
So, that's what we've been up to, and that you'll see with a lot of this, it's sort of focusing on making this year work, and building an informed, enthusiastic, patron-based community and donor base. So, it's a lot of that work. So, we are still looking at, we are still experiencing a shortfall for this year. There is some good news with that, that we are looking to, we needed to withdraw an additional $2,000 that's above interest from our endowment this year, quite frankly, to make payroll work this month. Let's see, so, but the worst-case scenario, we anticipate withdrawing less than half of what we have ever withdrawn before. A few years back, we were routinely withdrawing $60,000. We've put the brakes on it quite dramatically. And currently, the library's endowment contains $246,000. So, with that being said, that's what we're up to, and we do anticipate seeking a significant appropriations increase again this year, just to make our year-to-year work. It will also allow our Board to focus not just on making this year, but making our, making the endowment a sustainable and healthy amount.
It's impressive to see that your efforts to increase your donor base, along with those that just used the benefit of the library, seem, appear to be really successful. Because to be sustainable, you need that strength of the repeat donors on an annual basis, because as the endowment fund, you learned, was not going to be sustainable, because it was being invaded for so much, for so long. But it's so impressive to see what was through a lot of effort, I'm sure with your leadership, and the Friends, and your executive team, that you managed to rally the community to recognize what an important asset this is, and is not going to survive without community support, including Bennington's. Because I think when we visited during the budget time, and even before, remember we had discussions, Jeanne and I, that it's like, this is not going to work, you know, you just can't, just, and that clarion call that you've sent out and worked on has certainly been responded to. And expect that this foundation can continue to increase to, over the years, so that the appropriation needs are always going to be there for a small community library, and I expect probably at your Library Association conferences, et cetera, they're all talking about how much of a struggle it is for smaller libraries to be sustainable, especially without philanthropy and also community support. So, it's really impressive to see how far you've come in a short period of time, but I open it to my colleagues just to share their perspective on either sage advice, which I'm sure can come from some of the folks who have experienced more than I do on these things. So, without further ado, I'll just ask if there are comments, questions, suggestions, or accolades which are appropriate right now.
Yeah, congratulations. That is truly amazing, what you've accomplished in a very short period of time. And when we spoke, and I asked you the question, is the community aware that your library was having some financial difficulties, and you said no, and I was really encouraged when you said that, because I knew all you had to do was ask.
Yes.
And make them aware.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's, proof is in the pudding. So, I have a question. All these initiatives that you took on since January, are they all new initiatives, or were you building upon established events or community support in some way, or was this, having planned many events myself, these are very time-consuming. I'm amazed that you were able to do them, in addition to all your other program that you do on a daily basis.
Which programs do you mean?
Well, I mean, the initiatives to raise the money.
Pretty much since January, yeah, we kind of just-
That was all new.
Got right up and wrote off on it.
Wow. You've been really busy, really busy. Well, all I'm gonna say is congratulations and keep up the good work.
And I'd just like to point out, as an example of Jenny's creativity and enthusiasm and initiative, this entire summer program, the only thing that it is costing is the paper that it's printed on.
Wow.
That's great.
The rest of that has been funded through, yeah, Nicole, Nicole and I have both been collaborating on this. This is our third summer reading club lineup in recent memory. Grant-funded, Friends-funded, but yeah, you don't need a lot to make it happen sometimes.
But it's an example of what the community will lose.
And what they want.
Right.
When we had our sign-up day, I think it was not last Friday, but the Friday before, we had kids, about 25 kids or so lined up outside the library, waiting for us to open. They wanted to come in and register for our summer reading club.
That's great.
So, it is what folks want.
Thanks for coming early this year, so we can kind of keep this on our radar. I know last year it was some sticker shock to kind of see the increase in funding, other requests for funding, and now we can kind of, I mean, I can't guarantee an outcome that's gonna be different this year, but it's also nice to know kind of what you have incorporated, let the community know again that there's a significant shortfall that's coming our way, and you guys are trying to fill that gap. I'm certainly not gonna sit here and say we're going to, you know, appropriate the significant increase that, you know, you're hinting towards, but it's nice to know that you guys are trying and actively working, you know, to make it happen. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I can't add much more to what Carson and Jeanne said, except to say and echo their congratulations for the hard work that you've done and the success that you've had.
Thanks, the year's only half over, so you know, we'll see what happens.
Is your fiscal year December 31?
Yes.
Didn't you just say June 30 to July 1?
That's how we track our annual campaign. Our annual campaign launches in the, well, it has been in November or December. This year, we're launching in October, but we've been tracking that like a June to July, just to take in, so we have an accurate reflection of how well that particular campaign went, rather than tracking January to December.
Okay. Your Friends group, the Friends of the Library, how many folks serve on that, in that group?
Last count, I had about 40 or 45 folks, but we're always looking for new members. So, if anybody wants to come and help out, not only with our book and bake sale, but we have a number of volunteer opportunities, yes, so that's how many folks.
So, has that number increased since we were visiting last January?
Yeah, yeah, I would say. We usually have our meetings around a small table, and I couldn't get everybody around the table this last time, so, yes.
That speaks to the leadership, to be able to basically bring the folks into the, bring to the tent, because it just doesn't happen. As much as the need has been, it really takes energy and enthusiasm and just darn work to get where you're today. So, don't stop.
It also speaks well for the community, too, though.
That's right.
You know, that sort of volunteerism shows up, and it is remarkable what you three and all of your staff and all of your volunteers have done, and that's great. I, I'm a little bit reminded of something my grandfather used to say, and he was, he used to say, you know, keep one hand for the boat and one hand for yourself. And what he meant by that was, you're no good if you get washed overboard in a storm. So, I do worry a little bit about, and I'm saying this to you, Mary, you know, you can, it's nice not to increase wages with, even though cost of living's going up, but you can only do that so long before, you know, it starts to really hurt.
The Board was not in favor of that decision.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, so Jenny, to lose somebody who's clearly very committed to our community and making a big effort would be very sad, too. And so, at some level, it's incumbent on the library, you know, to keep making sure that the staff is, feels well-compensated and living at a sustainable level. So, I do encourage you to kind of not lose track of that, but also, I think this was Jeanne's point, that in the Grants and Gifts since January, it's a very impressive list, but all but the last two are new initiatives. So, you're putting more things on your plate, you know, besides running a really good library and offering a lot of existing programs, you're also adding a tremendous amount of programs here, which is wonderful, and I think will build your base of support, and certainly will add to the value to the community and what you're giving to people, but it also runs the risk of burning you and Nicole and other people out a little bit. So, I'm not trying to be, tell you your job, but I just would keep a handle on how much new stuff you're starting, so that, so you're able to be kind of durable and keep going with the project, instead of giving it all and then burning out and feeling like you can't keep going with it.
No worries, we just became residents in North Bennington. I'm in it for the long haul, hopefully, and I see this as not borrowing from my future to pay for today. It was my choice, and I consider it a donation.
That's great.
Thank you for that.
Then you've made me very happy. So, yeah, it is impressive, and I'm echoing everything that everyone has said, and I would hope that the new initiatives just, you know, continue to show the value of what you offer, and I think it's pretty darn impressive to have a bunch of kids waiting in line for you to open the doors, so, kudos to you.
It's pretty cute, I got some pictures, so, they were like, just waiting, like knocking on the door. I was like, it's not 1 o'clock!
That's great. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I, too, wanna thank you. I appreciate, you know, being new at this last year, the budget session, and having this like halfway point as an update, and seeing all these new initiatives is great, so thank you for your work, and good luck.
Thanks.
Not to cast any cold water on the discussion, have you thought about what kind of appropriation increases you're going to be seeking, or is it you're gonna wait till the end of your fiscal year, Mary?
I think we need to get a little bit into it. Our 2018 budget is a balanced budget, but it also requires us increasing $9,000 on our annual campaign, and bringing in $15,000 of new initiatives, of which we have seven already in. Like Jenny says, we only have half the year done. So, if we can do that and maintain expenses, which we have always been able to do that, we should be able to only ask for, I would say, I would consider it a modest increase, and not asking for an increase, again, from Bennington, from North Bennington and Shasberry since they stepped up. But I guess for us, significant, you kindly contributed an extra $4,000 last year. We would certainly ask for more than $4,000, but we're not gonna ask for 50%.
So, are you telegraphing the $2,000 number here, in that that's the deficit you had this year, that you had to draw from capital reserve?
We have, we have, yes, we have already had to withdraw $2,000 more than we had budgeted. Our endowment yielded $6,000 of interest, and that has been taken out, but we also had to take out $2,000 more. Now, the majority of our funding does come from the appropriations, and that fiscal year starts in July. So, that's really, once we get underway, and that is, it'll give us a better indication. But I guess what I'm telegraphing is, we're gonna ask for more than $4,000, but we are not necessarily gonna ask for $24,000. But it will depend on how successful we can be with keeping the momentum going, with the initiatives we have, with the donor courting that has been done, the education that we've been doing within our donor base. So, that will, we'll see.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sounds like you have a good handle on it. Other questions? Thank you very much, and Nicole? Thank you. Thanks, Mary. We wish you well.
Thank you so much, and I'll see you in a few months.
You got it. Thanks, Nicole.
Jenny, did you have any, did you have any kind of PSA announcements you wanted to make while you were up here? Did we cut you off on that? Things you wanted to talk about, dates, or?
No, for the event you're touting there, that's Sorting the News from the Chaff with a UNH journalism professor on July 27th, it's a Friday night, at 6:30. It's all gonna be about how to read the news online, and distinguishing good news from less good news. And that's a totally free program at the Left Bank in North Bennington, sponsored by the Friends of Robert Frost.
Thank you, that's really great. We'll keep that readily available. Okay, next item. Stephanie Lane is here. All right, we're gonna go right into it, then. Stephanie.
Hi.
Hi, Stephanie.
How are you?
Good. Welcome to the final hearing of the Hearing on Appleby.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Yep.
And for-
So, I think it's just me this evening, I think there are lots out of town, so I'm going to play both roles, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Move the microphone.
Yeah.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so what we're here for this evening is, the town of Bennington was awarded a Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $750,000 by the Agency of Commerce and Community Development in July of 2014, actually. And the grant will be provided as a deferred loan to the Monument View Apartments Limited Partnership to support the construction of 24 units of affordable housing on the parcel located in between South Street and Silver Street, which is, which was Eden Way and is now, includes Hilltop Drive. The design for the project consists of seven buildings, five of which will be two-bedroom duplexes, a six-plex and an eight-plex as well will be on the site, all located on Hilltop Drive. The two buildings that are larger, the six and eight plaques, will have a common hallway and vestibule. The ground floor units will have a back door to the outside, and the second floor units are designed with small balconies. The multi-unit buildings are a mix of eight one-bedroom units, four two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. All the ground floor units in the multifamily buildings will be adaptable with accessible amenities, and one building will be fully ADA accessible. So, you should have included a PM1 document, which is a resolution to, for the town to accept the grant agreement on behalf of Shire's Housing and Monument View Apartments LP. So, we're here tonight to ask for the resolution to be passed, and to answer any questions that you might have about the project itself, or progress, or anything that you'd like to explore with me.
Would you like a motion to approve before we?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this now. When is the?
Groundbreaking.
Yeah, groundbreaking, that's, when do the activities start?
They actually started in March, March of this year, March 6.
And occupancy expected when?
Occupancy, I would say that we're, we're actually moving along really well, and I don't want to be overly optimistic, but I think the end of December, probably late January, will be fully complete, and then occupancy February is what we're shooting for at this point. So it's moving along well.
Great.
Yeah.
And we have the resolution in our packet, I believe, didn't we?
You do, and I have one for your signature, so once it's approved.
Could you give it to us so we can read it?
You're welcome.
Yeah. It's in the packet, yeah. But I think we should read it, just so that the.
Would you like the? Okay. So, the grant agreement resolution, single grantee, whereas the town of Bennington has applied for funding under the Vermont Community Development Program, was provided in 10 VSA Chapter 29, and has received an award of funds under said provisions, and whereas the Agency of Commerce and Community Development has tendered a grant agreement named and to this municipality for said funding. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the legislative body of this municipality accepts and agrees to the terms and conditions of said agreement, that Zirwate Chadri title, Community Development Director, is hereby designated as the person with overall administrative responsibility for the VCDP activities related to this grant agreement, and that Stuart Hurd, Town Manager, who is either the Chief Executive Officer, or is the Town Manager, the City Manager, or the Town Administrator, hereby designated as the authorizing agent to execute the grant agreement and other such documents as may be necessary to secure these funds. And then it was the date of June 25th, 2018, and looks for our signatures.
Other comments, questions, discussion on the resolution? Very none? I'd move the, excuse me, I'd ask for a vote on this resolution, signified by aye, your favor of the resolution?
Aye.
That's seven in favor and no opposition. That's it.
Thank you.
Continue.
Thank you.
How far along in construction is my, do you have Rubza?
We have, yeah, we do, actually, on the A and B buildings, which are the larger buildings further into the middle of the site, and we have, let's see, six out of the seven foundations in the ground, so it's moving along quickly.
That's great.
Yeah, it's going fast. It's going well, too.
Thanks very much, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Stu, the manager's report?
Yes, I don't have any action items for you tonight, but I do want to announce that, as is included in my report, that the town has submitted an application for a grant in the amount of $90,000 to fund the Applegate to Willbrook Path. This grant requires a 20% match. The match funds will be sought from those who have previously donated funds, and they include the Whipstock Hill Preservation Society, Bennington School District, United Way, Southwestern Vermont Medical Center, and the Bennington County Regional Commission. The town will also provide funds from its sidewalk budget. So, that's just to let the board know that this application is out there. You'll recall that the bids came in substantially higher than we anticipated for the construction of this, so we have kind of revalued the project, done some small design changes, and we expect that these funds will be sufficient to complete the project.
When do you expect that will be off the grounds, Stu, when the, and the process gets through that grant application?
I'll look to my assistant manager to answer that question.
We're still hoping that Vtrans Project Manager still believes it's possible that we could break ground this fall and have it done before the, before the next, before the end of the year, but.
Yeah.
Wow.
Because that's, you know, been long needed and long studied and long hoped for.
Good things take time.
We noticed that.
They take way too long, unfortunately.
Dan, before you go.
And the price keeps going up, too.
Yeah, the price keeps going up. So, from my days in the planning commission, I remember looking at the sidewalk inventory, which we've done for the entire town, and we have kind of graded every sidewalk as being a high, medium, or low priority for replacement. I know you're pecking your way through that, but if we are to provide funds from its sidewalk budget, does that set us behind schedule on, on keeping up with the sidewalk replacement plan?
No, we actually anticipated using sidewalk funds for this project, so there's money already budgeted.
Okay, so we're on track with the sidewalks, then?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is that priority list available to the members of the general public?
It is, yes. Contact Dan Monks.
Okay. Good, okay. Do you need any?
If there's an action necessary, we'll, when the grant, assuming that the grant is made, we'll be back to have you accept it.
And at that point, there might be additional funds available from these various entities?
Yes.
Okay, good. In wastewater? Yeah, that was a?
Yeah, I included just a brief update. People who are out there may have noticed that there were some slight odors beginning to be generated. We contacted the state and asked if we could take down the third row of the four rows. We've already replaced two, so we've taken down the third row of the RBCs. We've chlorinated the area, we've cleaned them up, we're doing the repairs necessary to accept the new RBCs. The state is allowing us to operate on a reduced number at the present time, because they understand that their, our next delivery is probably not until the beginning of August, I think. These things have to be manufactured and then shipped to us, and, but certainly we're, in a sense, ahead of schedule. We were beginning to experience problems with some of the motors in this particular third row, so it made sense to take it offline, and the state is working with us, which is very nice.
So the odors were coming from the third row, from the insufficient outdated RBCs?
Yes, it was going, it was starting to go septic, that it wasn't, it was overloaded, it wasn't doing the job, and we're finding that the first two rows are doing a better job now than the entire four rows were doing prior to the repairs. So we're, we're seeing some really good growth on the RBCs, we're seeing some really good results.
Great, I think that's going to be helpful, especially when it gets to 100 degrees this weekend. Anything else, Stu?
No, no, I don't think so.
We do have a water and sewer main acceptance discussion relative to Chester Knoll.
You folks all know Gene Rowley. He's the past president of the Chester Knoll Association. With him is Leonard Cave, who is the current president. As you have in your packet, we, they have prepared an easement deed that's been reviewed by Town Council and found to be acceptable. This is similar to what we did many, many years ago with the Maplewood development, where we accepted the water and sewer systems. We are not accepting or proposing to accept the roadways. Gene and his folks understand that they're, they do not conform and could not conform to our standards, but here they've been operating these systems on their own as a, I can't remember what it's called, but it's a sort of a standby, or a stand-alone side system for our municipal system. It requires a certain amount of effort on their part to do the reporting and the testing. This will relieve them of them, of that opportunity, and put the onus on us, but it, because it's part of our municipal system, once we accept it, there's really that kind of testing, and those testing regimes are not required.
So the.
So we'll be doing hydrant flushing, we'll be doing the repairs. The easement deed provides for us to be able to go in and do those things. Of course, we have to return the surface to the condition we found it in, in better or, in better condition or at the same condition. And we have as-bills in, in my office of all of the water and sewer locations, these are the mains we're talking about, and all the manhole locations, and so we're, we're pretty happy, they, Gene worked very hard with Terry Morris before his retirement to make sure that everything was in order, so we could carry through with this. And the, the delay since that time really has been just making sure that the easement deed was acceptable and one that we, we would be able to work with. So I would look for a motion to make and accept those.
Can I have a motion for purposes of the discussion?
So moved.
Second, okay, second, good. Discussion relative to this, does this change the specter of water and sewer bills, or, you know, does this mean that?
These, these folks are already paying municipal water and sewer fees, so it doesn't, it doesn't gain us any income, but it, it gives us control of the internal parts of their system, and it relieves them of that responsibility as a homeowners association.
And this is consistent with our longstanding policy of accepting municipal resources that are up, fully up to code, right?
That's correct, especially water and sewer systems, because they are, they are the most difficult to maintain for the private, private user.
And thank you both very much for coming, and thank you for making the extra effort to not make this a very difficult decision by cheaping out, or making the pipes too small, or something like that. It's great that you worked with Terry, and it's great that you really went all the way on this.
And you, you probably don't mind giving away this responsibility, anyway. We do appreciate you coming in tonight, and especially for working, as Donald said, with, with the staff, and this demonstrates what, you know, private development can result in public good. Just take some time, energy, and resources, which you certainly provided, and, and thanks, and without further ado, we have the motion, all in favor, accepting the easements. All in favor, seven in favor, no one's opposing. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, we can't help you with the roads, but, can't help you with the roads.
We'll, we'll set up a closing date for, lend for you and I to sign these deeds at some point in the future.
Yes, I'm expecting your contact.
I'll be in touch.
We.
Thank you, very much.
We have appointments to the, an appointment to the Board of Listers. The board met with an applicant tonight, and I'm entertaining a motion to appoint an individual to the Bennington Board of Listers.
I'd like to nominate Peter Green to become a part of the Board of Listers. I think he's eminently qualified, and will bring a lot of commitment and intelligence to the position.
Thanks. I need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, his resume was impressive, certainly. Were you going to mention that?
No, guard it.
It was, it was, it takes time to visit with people about these kind of things, but it was nice that he took the time to come in and visit with us. He's had, has extensive experience with engineering, extensive experience with both residential and commercial ownership of land. He's had, he's recently been through some grievance process himself, so he knows how the tax system works around here, and above all, he just really seemed very committed to trying to give back to the community. So it was, it was a very pleasant interview, and I'm thankful that he took the time to come in and meet with us.
And he does understand the commitment that he's made relative to the responsibilities that go with the, the office, and he is, as Donald said, willing to give back to the community, which he believes is given so much to him. So all in favor of the.
One more comment. If I wasn't present for the interview, can I still?
No.
You should. Can I comment?
No, you can't. It's not in the gimpy art. You can, but it's up to you.
I'm going to, because I know him personally, and I think he'd do a great job at it.
That's even better. But, all in favor, signified by aye. Seven in favor, and no opposition to that. Thank you. What else do we have tonight to discuss, other than, other than other business?
I know, we're, we're all done.
That's got to be a record.
Well, it's not done yet.
It's a bunch of stuff to this.
Any other business?
None.
Did you do that? Carson?
Nothing this week.
Okay.
I don't want to take too long, but I would say that on Friday, GBEX, the Greater Bank Interfaith Council, did, did the workshop Bridges Out of Poverty, and it was an all-day experience, and I know a lot of you had mentioned you would have liked to have gone. It was during a weekday, it was kind of difficult to get to. My employer was kind enough to give me a day off to go, and, and it was a really very important day, and I'd like to thank GBEX very, very strongly for bringing this group to our community. It was a presentation by Prue Peace, who, who is a consultant, but also a dairy farmer from Tunbridge, Vermont, and she was very compelling in, in some of the things that she had to share about poverty and about the way we look at poverty. So, she was clear when, at the beginning of the, at the presentation, that she wasn't going to give us how-to-fix-it measures, she wasn't going to tell us how to fix everything in our community, but that she was going to help the group with a lens on poverty and how we look at it, and it, she makes a pretty compelling case that how you look at poverty really helps you get at solutions, and it's not enough to tolerate poverty. You have to both understand it, and you have to really work hard to, to meet it where it is. And, so, I don't want to put the whole day into a summary, but I think that's probably the closest I can do. It, it was very moving, and it was really one of three, it's a three-day program, it's the first of, of three days. I don't know if they're planning to bring the other days back or not, but it was very well-attended, there were well over 100 people there, must have been, I don't know how many people there were, but the, but the parish at the, at the Catholic Church was full, so it was, it was very well-attended. A lot of people came, very committed to try to work on things in our community, and it was quite uplifting.
Where did you feel the audience came from? Was it from the community or areas or?
A lot of people were community members, some people were service providers, there were educators there, there were, there were people from surrounding neighborhoods that were there. This program's gotten quite a national following. It started with a book, I think, and about 20 years ago, called Bridges Out of Poverty, and it's really been a program that many communities have used to set up a kind of a plan for getting at a very deep systemic problem in a thoughtful way. And she didn't, she didn't give us the, as I say, the quickie how-to-get-out-of-it situation, but she did start laying the groundwork for some of the factors that have to be taken into account. So the, some of the people that got a lot out of it were the immediate service providers who, who learned a lot about what can be expected and what can't be expected, and how to approach people and whatnot. It was a very powerful program, so, anyway, that's just an update for the board.
Thanks for.
I know some of you would have liked to have been there if you could have, but I tried to let people know that the select board was there in spirit.
Good. It's Cat TV there.
Thank you for attending.
Cat TV?
I didn't see Cat TV. I did see Derek Carson there, yeah, but I didn't see Cat TV yet, I think.
Jeanie?
Nothing.
Just one thing. Stu, can you talk to, or give a thank you to Paul Dussat and the chief of the work he does in our community? I know the video that was on the news the other night, all over Facebook, and I heard kids talking about it at school, and if you haven't seen the Monument video, it's worth seeing.
It's hilarious.
The work he and his officers do on, in our community is just, it really helps break down those barriers, especially with young people, with officers, and the topic in our nation right now, the way law enforcement has looked at. The work he and his officers do on, in our community is just, it really helps break down those barriers, especially with young people, with officers, and it's the, you know, topic in our nation right now, the way law enforcement has looked at it. I really think it's a great asset, and he deserves it.
He, he, he indicated today that it's been over 27,000 views.
What is it? I don't know anything about this.
He, uh, he went on the, he did the water slide at Monument Elementary.
Full uniform.
Full uniform.
Okay.
He got a little airtime, too, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to see an increase in the uniform cleaning budget line.
Yeah, I was checking that earlier.
Although maybe just one week, we could see it.
He brought, for me, he brought new meaning to the, to the, to the music of slip-sliding away.
The, uh, I saw the great race of participants coming to town, through town, and that was really impressive.
Yeah, I, I, I had to move through that at the noon hour, uh, heading home for lunch. Uh, it was very well attended. Um, people seemed to be enjoying themselves.
Yeah.
And, uh, as I finished up my lunch hour and came down to Main Street, uh, there was a massive water main break.
That's where I saw Paul.
Convent Avenue and Main, so it really, it really made traffic getting through there.
And Paul was out directing.
A lot of fun, but apparently it was a massive break. Uh, we hope to have water back on by 7:00 tonight, but it was, the road was moving like this.
Really?
It was a big and old main or something, right?
Yeah, so, well, I don't know whether it was one, one of the older ones, or whether it was just one that went, for whatever reason.
But that was like a curveball for the police department to have to deal with that, plus the, just the, moving the crowds round and through. And they did it seamlessly and courteously, courteously.
Yeah.
Like Jacobs got the other way.
Yes, I heard.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, I guess a motion to adjourn is in order?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned until the next meeting, which is on...
July 9th?
July 9th.
July 9th, thank you, thank you.